Hi everyone, welcome. Thanks everyone for joining. Hi everyone and welcome to our webinar about the hidden power of the Art Planning Board. To start, just a few points on the logistics, you already do that, feel free to comment in the chat where you're from, also which company you're working for. This session will be recorded, so we will send that link after the webinar, also the slides, of course. And if you have questions throughout this webinar, there's this Q&amp;A button in the bottom of your Zoom screen, feel free to open that Q&amp;A. We will answer your questions either on the fly in the chat and we will probably also pick some at the end after our presentation. My name is Silvio, I'm the Product Manager of PI Planning.io and I am extremely happy to have Michael Stump with us today. If you want to learn more about us, there's the link to our LinkedIn profiles. But Michael is obviously well-known in our community as SBCT and SAFE Fellow and he prepared a great story to share with us today. So Michael, what is your story of a PI planning not creating the expected results? Yeah, thank you and really excited to be here and share some of my learning and experience. And I had the pleasure to visit some organizations, lots of organizations, doing health checks of PI plannings and I integrated some of the learnings into this conversation today with Silvio. So in preparation for a health check, PI Planning health check, I met with an RTE, let's call her Sarah. And I had a conversation with Sarah and she talked about the challenges she has with low predictability, low engagement, low throughput and she was really frustrated. And I actually see that a lot with RTEs. So they were actually really close of stopping PI planning and go back to the old way of working. And this problem that several organizations see after some time doing PI planning, that the results are going away, they are not there anymore, the energy is not there. There are a lot of reasons for that, we cannot dive into all of them, but let's see if we can look at some of these reasons and some mechanisms, how you can address them. And the Art Planning Board is such a powerful and underestimated tool. So in the discussion with Silvio, we thought about how can we make that a little bit more visible and show the gold that you can find there. So let's start a little bit. What I really like to do is use PI planning as a great diagnostic tool. It's so, so powerful because you get to observe what's happening in day one and day two of PI planning. So you can see team dynamics, you can see how the communication is going, you see how decisions are made and you can typically see what's the level of psychological safety in the organization. So just by observing that, you get so many information that you can really help to make improvements afterwards. The second part is our Art Planning Board and that's where we want to dive a little bit deeper. And today is it just about the Art Planning Board. So we want to take you on a journey, we will go from capacity allocation, then we talk about milestones and events, we talk about features and dependencies and we go into RT power tools. That's during PI planning, so that's the plan part, but we will also go to the execute part. So all what we are talking today is around the Art Planning Board, four topics that we want to cover. So let's go back to Sarah. So Sarah said she had a really low throughput, low engagement and we were digging a little bit deeper and I looked, she was not doing the Art Planning Board anymore, so I looked at some old ones. And one of the tools I'm using a lot is capacity allocation. So this is the capacity allocation, we see that in the tool piplanning.io. One of the best PI planning tools for me because it live synchronizes with Jira, it's simple and really creates transparency. So what we see here on this capacity board is the overall art on the left side. So what I can see about 78% is user story, features related work. So what's customer facing, 20% overall is innovation and a little bit is enablers, so building the architecture runway. And when I see this, one of the questions I had for Sarah was, where is your maintenance and operations? Do you have anything related to that? And so I asked Sarah and she said, "Oh no, no, we don't want to show that." Our business owners don't want to see this operation and maintenance stuff, they want to see the new things that we are doing. They are not interested in the old, that's why we improved the PI planning, that we are not showing that anymore and we are just reducing capacity. And this is our first red alert here, so that's a typical anti-pattern, anti-pattern for me because if we start to hide stuff, we are not supporting the transparency core value anymore. So we are hiding stuff, we are not giving credit to teams that investing a lot of time, passion and energy in running the systems, in maintaining it and we can also not improve it. So was interesting though to go a little bit deeper and Sarah said, "Yeah, we actually have no idea how much time we spend on maintenance and operation and it's substantial, but there was no transparency about that." So we changed this and made it visible. But let me go back quickly to talk first about capacity allocation in general. So capacity allocation is something we do, we use on different levels. Typically before PI planning, we agree how much should be spent on features, how much should be spent on enablers, how much should be spent on improvement items. So if you're an RTE out there, how many features do you have in the art backlog which are improvement I&amp;A related? I see a lot, in a lot of situations that this is not happening. And something that we are adding at JLS, you know, we are really focusing on the people part because for us, there is one role missing in the art triad, product management, system architect and the RT. Nobody has people as the first focus. And the people authority, people developers play a really, really important role. So we want to make those type of works visible as well. If you're interested to read more, I don't have time, but you'll find a QR code with the link to the white paper up here over my picture where you can read more about what is this people developer and how does the people runway look like. But going back to, oh, I leave the QR code on there for a minute. So this is capacity allocation and then we start to be very concrete before the PI planning. Features, typically the product managers that are responsible for that, enablers, system architect, maintenance, often also system architect, operations probably as well, innovation PM and SA improvements, RTE and the people enablers is the people developer. So you separate the concerns and you go in with a hypothesis which before the PI planning and when you're in PI planning, you can check with the reality, is this really what is happening? And what I'm doing now in the app, I'm switching, so we are seeing the Art Planning Board of the Art Pixel Muse at the moment and I'm switching to a different art on that solution train, it's called Forge Symphony and you see much more information on the Art Planning Board. And I'm going again into the art metrics and see the capacity allocation of the whole art, current view in our PI planning, so I can see how it is distributed at this point of time. And then I can use my, what's the expectation and check with reality and make sure that we have the different points. So now we see about 38% of the overall capacity is going into new value, customer visible value, 15% in enablers, 14% is operations, 11% innovation. Make sure that you show innovation as well, how much capacity do you spend on innovation? 10% maintenance, 6% is people topics, we invest in people and 5% is about improvements. Don't forget that, what comes out of retrospectives and out of the I&amp;A should be in the art backlog, should be in PI planning and we should reserve some capacity, it's based on the core value relentless improvement. So that's why this tool of capacity allocation is so, so powerful. You see the overall on the left and then you see each team and I can dig deeper if I want to have more information. Also interesting, load and capacity as an RT, this is a really powerful tool because I can see overall what are the different teams, what's the load of them, where do I need to go and support. So so much about the topic of capacity allocation, of course we could pay much longer.
There's a great question around it. So Idanu is asking for a team, will OCM doing operational work in an art? It's hard to set capacity planning and work in sprints. So we adopt the Kanban weekly prioritization process, how do we best track our work in PI execution?
That's a real good point. I actually want to know a little bit at the beginning, how much do we expect that capacity to be? I really love the question, but if we don't have a hypothesis, how much time do we invest there? Then it's hard to see, I want to make it transparent to everybody. Yes, we have one team, typically that's the capacity of a team which is working on those topics and we have backlog items, kind of placeholders as well. And then we try to track is the F4 or the time, the capacity of that going up or down? Because in general, I want to reduce maintenance. So what do I need to do to reduce maintenance that I can spend more capacity in building new stuff? So I'm still working with Kanban teams, what I want to make sure, create transparency, what is our expectation? How much of the overall capacity is used for those maintenance and operations or operations topics? And then see is what we actually use, what we have planned for, that we can make adjustments and improvements over time. So let's go back to our little overview, so we touched on capacity allocation and we could actually spend about two hours talking just about this. Please reach out if you want to chat more, but I want to go a little bit further to talk about milestones. Because milestones is also something that you want to make visible on the Art Planning Board, it's creating transparency. Just talking about milestones, I still see lots of organizations seeing milestones as a face gate. So it's a roadblock, you have kind of a steering committee where you need to present and if everything goes well, you can move on. But that's not how I like to see milestones. I prefer much more this kind of milestones. We are on a journey, we are driving and there is a milestone at the side of the road telling us, okay, we need to remember where we are, we need to see how good we are doing and get a little bit different perspectives, but it's not blocking us from moving forward. So also in Agile, there are milestones, there are good milestones to have. So let's look a little bit into the board we have here. Nope, that was one too much. So here we have, switching that, I'm scrolling into the top left corner. So you see there's a swim lane that is called Milestones and Events. I actually prefer events because milestones is for me a little bit more PI cadence, system demo cadence, but we have special events like team presentations, we have a roadshow and here we have, oh, there is the Formula One race in Melbourne, which is certainly happening on March 16, 2025. So this is not going to move, it's a hard milestone and this is what we want to make visible on the board and put them up there. So I'm scrolling out again because I want to talk about a little bit of an anti-pattern again here. So alert is coming on, what I see a lot is a huge mess of milestones up there, way too many. And what is happening if there are too many milestones? Then you don't have an overview anymore. So make sure that you don't have too many milestones visible on the board, but really the key elements. Anubhav, I think you have a question.
Sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I think the screen resolution and this is based on the feedback in the chat as well, it's a bit low resolution, so maybe you want to zoom in a bit so that we can read or just maybe refresh the screen.
Okay, is it better now?
Still a bit blurry, but I think we still get to see the milestones at least, maybe something with the resolution.
Good, so yeah, you can make it blurry and then you don't have transparency anymore, you just hide it behind. So it's, let's see, hopefully it's getting better in a couple of minutes. I can talk a little bit more about the purpose of them, so. But we want to make those events, those key things really visible, not too many, but have the right amount to create that transparency. And that already brings me and us to the next part, features and dependencies. So one of the key elements of the Art Planning Board, it will be probably a little bit blurry again, I hope it's getting better. But when you think about if you're a business owner, a stakeholder, what can you see on the Art Planning Board? One of the key things is you can see here which feature is delivered by which team in which iteration. Isn't that really powerful to see? We can see what's going on, if I have an overall view, I can see, oh, when do I get my features, typically not at the end. So or I see arts doing it more at the end, but I want to have an ongoing value delivery and this creates a lot of transparency for the stakeholders. So this view is also helpful during PI planning execution, which will go into afterwards. And then we see the red things on this board, those are significant dependencies. And I want to emphasize significant because that brings me to another anti-pattern alert we have here. If every story is visible on the Art Planning Board, you lose value. It's not the goal to make all the dependencies visible, we need to have the significant ones so that we know what are critical elements. There are more dependencies typically, smaller ones, if you have a meeting and so, I would not put that on the board. So also make sure that you have the right level of dependence. And then you can dig in and during the PI planning, get a little bit more information. So what I like about the Art Planning Board in piplanning.io, I can zoom in, I can select and pin a dependency and now I can zoom out and see all the other things that are impacted by this dependency. Why is this important for me and for you as an RT or a business owner as well? Because I can see, this is very critical for the next feature, which is key for the roadshow. It's important for another team's order dependencies, for another team's feature and it has dependencies and it's really risky when I see that. So my conversation as an RT would be, do we have any options to maybe split that dependency a little bit to reduce risk of reaching the milestones of the roadshow 2024? So it creates the transparency, really, really helpful to see. Other thing which I really like on the board, which I don't have on the physical boards, paper boards, I like them as well, but I can click here and see what are the risky links. Risky links are, or dependencies are, this one where I see a feature, but what needs to be prepared, the dependency is coming in iteration or two iterations later. We cannot go out of PI planning if we have something like this on the board, so we need to fix that. Or what we also see is up here, we have the dependency and we have it in the same iteration. So then I get an alarm about, yeah, it's the same iteration dependencies, how do I want to deal with that? So this is quite powerful, so I'm clearing the view and the filters there, there's much more functionality that we can use. But one thing that is interesting, Silvio, how do those dependencies get on the board here?
Yeah, exactly. Of course, let's play that through, so I'm on the Team Craftara board, by the way, so yeah, exactly. Here we are, so I think that is one of the most important workflows. It's a small one, but it's a powerful one. So let's imagine we do have a dependency with another team. And now I just guide you, Michael, so you can create the dependency and that dependency, maybe for that you might also need to zoom in a little bit, but I think my guidance should also help to understand what we are talking about. So we create the dependency, we identify, hey, we have to collaborate together with another team to get a feature done. So we would create that dependency and does it work?
Which one? So I will refresh quickly, just maybe that will help. It's not on a big screen, it's actually on a smaller screen to make it not blurry.
So let me create the dependency. So we need to collaborate with another team, so now you see the dependency is kind of a special sticky note. It is also not synchronized with your ALM tool because it is representing work. But what we can do with that dependency sticky, we can share that dependency sticky with another team, either within my art or also if you're having multiple arts working together, we could also share that dependency with another art. So I will for now, share that dependency with Team Creator. So Michael, if you go to the Creator board, then you should actually in just a second or so, see that dependency appear, here we go. So now both teams do actually get that dependency visualized on their board. Transparency is given and now of course, Michael's team and my team, we would start talking about that dependency, what needs to be done, maybe I can also join your board now. So we will, we will start to plan work here, work to solve the dependency, so you see what's going on. We can also link our work to the dependency by drag and drop, very simple. We could link those, that work also to the relevant feature and that links would be synchronized with your ALM tool, Jira Rally or also Azure DevOps, whatever you have in place. And yeah, Michael, that's how we would talk about that dependency.
Well, and I see also that we have a mark on here, a sticker and then we have it here, the sticker is the handshake kind of, and now what do we do?
Now, yes, if you click there, you can, of course, as soon as we agreed on, hey, yes, we will be able to do that dependency in iteration three, we would want to visualize that dependency on the Art Planning Board, so you can share that to the Art Planning Board.
Going over here to the Art Planning Board.
So did it show up, here we go. We need to collaborate, so hopefully you can see where I'm showing, so this is the dependency. It showed up and obviously the last step we want to do, we want to link that dependency to the feature. Basically drawing the screen to the feature.
And then what we are going to do is, okay, we agreed, we will not move it without talking to the other team and we start to clear that flag on the dependency and now we have an agreement that this dependencies is visualized on the board. By the way, those flags, really, really powerful in the tool. So you can use them for several reasons and actions, that's hard for another webinar. Cool, so that's how we make the dependencies visible. And I want to switch, is it still blurry?
For me, it works, I don't know, Anubhav, is it different for you?
I think for some of the people it's working fine, probably it's something to do with their screen resolution, Michael, the bigger one. But I think some of them are seeing it perfectly fine, maybe we can zoom in a bit and just back on.
It could be that it's related to the bandwidth, sometimes I've seen that in the past, but so some people still say blurry, I will try something else. I will stop sharing quickly and I will do a different share.
Blurry, still blurry, still blurry, I'm just reading comments by the way.
What about now?
Exactly the same.
Okay, I shared it in a completely different way now, so that's weird.
Can you zoom in a bit, Michael? A lot of people are finding it better now, maybe if you zoom in. Yeah, and this is a better view, this is readable now, so design team requires.
Yes, the goal is not to be able to read, but I think if it's blurry, that's not good. But let's see, so we can do a specific demo, going maybe individually in at the later point of time. Let's see if I can show you some other things. Because what I want to do is go to the fourth step as an RTE, what can you see on the board? And this is probably now a little bit more challenging to see, I'm zooming in. Can you see the background color here? I see red, I see blue and if I go a little bit down here, I see yellow. Silvio, what is this?
Yeah, exactly, that is, that is a little help for RTEs because oftentimes we want to know, hey, how are we doing regarding our capacity? Are we overloading our sprints? How are the teams doing? And basically, those backgrounds simply represent the workload given on the corresponding team board. So if I get a sprint overloaded on a team board, that would be highlighted on the Art Planning Board as well. So I do not need to go through all the team boards or go and chat with them. I would get a visual indicator right away on the Art Planning Board, so small, but very powerful.
Very, very powerful, as an RT or I'm coaching RTEs, seeing this, I know where to go, I have an overview. And basically, let's go back to Sarah, Sarah had exactly that point because all the teams were completely overloaded. So it was not a surprise that she didn't have throughput and low engagement. So this visibility to see the load is extremely, extremely helpful. One other thing I wanted to point out, and I can zoom in again a little bit more, on the bottom left, we have two swim lanes that are related to one, another art and second one outside of the value stream. So dependencies within teams are the best one, dependencies within the art are okay, but as soon as I have dependencies outside of the art, it becomes difficult. So I want to make them visible and I do that here, I have dependencies on a supplier, legal and so on. And this is where you find gold, where you can mine your gold as an RTE because after the PI planning, then you can go in and you want to understand what's the recurrence of those external dependencies? What is the impact they have? I typically score them from one to five and then I have a kind of a prioritization on which one do I need to try to remove as the first one. So this really supports the principles organized around value, relentless improvement and improve the flow. So make those external dependencies visible on the board as well because this will help you then to deliver more, to improve the flow of value over time. And what I also want to show you, so this is more about PI planning. Now as a stakeholder, business owner, but also as an RT. Now, as a stakeholder, business owner, but also as an RTE, you can switch the mode on this board. And that's what I like so much about the tool. You can use them for PI planning, but then during PI execution as well. So I switch to a different mode, that's the execution mode. And again, I'm zooming in. I hope this is a little bit more visible. So what I can see now, with the mouse over, I can see the progress of one iteration here. I can see the progress of the individual teams on the left. And I can see progress of dependencies and the features as well. So I can just go over. So it, it will show me a, a pop-up and I can see how many are done, how many are in progress? And how many are still to do? So really good overview. So I use this board to do the art sync. And one other quick tip in art sync, whenever a dependency is done. I remove the string between the dependency and the feature. Because that is a sense of accomplishment. And it also shows quickly on the board where have we moved some of the risks and some of the dependencies. So I do that especially in the art sync, that we can do that together. And then you can really see the progress of the board and of the dependency over time. So one more thing, Silvio, I think there's something I've explored up here, board changes. Can you talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, exactly. That is something pretty new and let's call it an MVP as of now. The idea here is obviously that throughout the PI execution, our plan will change. And we wanna understand how did our plan evolve? What did change? So we can actually compare what did change comparing now and let's say yesterday. So if we are going into a daily stand-up, for instance, show me quickly what stories changed? Who did updates on certain stories? Or show me if there was a feature moved from one iteration to another? And I can also do that for comparing with the start of an iteration and start of the PI. So there's a lot more planned around this, just to get, get transparency around. How did our plan evolve and what exactly changed? How many features were postponed into a later iteration, et cetera? So there are a lot of questions around that, which we would like to be able to answer using this functionality here.
Really, really helpful to see the, the progress. So I, I think Silvio, thanks for explaining that. I think there's much more value in the execution as well, what you can find on this board. So use it in the daily life. Do the, the art things in front of the board and really use it as a tool. Can be quite powerful. As I change some things in the infrastructure, I need to show you some pictures a little bit later or send as a follow-up. We have some pictures that are showing how customers are also using it in the board. But we will skip that for the moment due to the infrastructure or due to the resolution topic. But what I wanted to share, going back to Sarah at the beginning. Her art made several changes, basically based on the observation, but especially what we find out during the analysis of the art planning board. So there's so much that you can find in there. So I would really encourage you to have the board. Make sure that it's, it's really set up in a, in a good way, that it creates transparency. And you use it for PI planning, but also after PI planning. That's where you can find a lot of additional things. So this is before we go into the Q and A, just one small thing, which it might be interesting for you as well. So we appreciate the time you spent here with us and learning. And we also want to give back a little bit. So we do PI planning health checks and we offer three free PI planning health checks. Where we come in, where we observe your PI, we give you some recommendations. If you're interested to win one, there is a QR code. You can find the QR code here or shared and fill in the details and we will reach out. And we will select, select the lucky three participants who will get the PI planning health check for free to get some ideas. I think, Silvio, do we want to go back to some questions?
Absolutely, absolutely. We do have a lot of questions, so let me scroll up again to the start. There was a very interesting question from Marcos and he is asking, or saying, my SBC recommended not estimating defects from maintenance. I didn't agree, but this created a conflict with the team. So what is your advice regarding defects, Michael?
So it, it's a good point. I think there is not a standard answer as everything, it depends a little bit on the situation. I like to see time we spend on dependencies or on, on, on bugs, on maintenance and operations. Because what I wanna do, I want to try to improve that over time. If I don't have transparency of how much we spend, then it's really hard to see, okay, we do measures, did it really improve? So yes, maybe you don't estimate each individual defect, but you figure out ways, how can you make visible? How much capacity is going into this type of work? And I think especially defects and bugs, I try to integrate that with, with test automation, to, to do testing, shift that to the left. But I want to understand how much time we spend there to also show if we make a change. And that's part of relentless improvement, that it really has an impact. And if I'm not showing it, if I cannot measure it, how do I know that I made improvements?
That totally makes, makes sense, Michael. Another, another question, and I, I would like to have your answer, Michael, because I know we talked about this years ago already. How does PI Planning IO support Kanban teams?
Oh, but, but Silvio, you would be the better one to answer that. I, I think also Kanban teams have a, a good understanding about their capacity, what they are doing. There, there's even Kanban teams, some, some work is a little bit planable and, or you can represent what you're doing. I think especially the team PI objectives. Kanban teams as Scrum teams are using that. And that's maybe the critical parts. But also if I have dependencies on the other teams. Yeah, that, that's something that I want to make visible also for Kanban teams. Because we know that maybe something is coming or we know we had challenges in the last PI. We might need to port from another team. So those are things that you can try and make visible. But I think, Silvio, what, what, what are your thoughts? And what you have, what have you seen?
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I agree. I mean, we, we get that question a lot. And I mean, one aspect regarding Kanban teams is always, how do we synchronize work from Kanban teams? Between PI Planning IO and for instance, Chira? There are ways to synchronize it. And as you, as you mentioned, Michael, during PI planning, we still wanna talk about dependencies we have to other teams. And especially if that other team is working as a Scrum team, they have those sprints. And we wanna understand, okay, when should we be able or when do we want to solve that dependency? Even if the related work, we then during PI execution go back and use our Kanban board. There's not a problem with that.
I do agree.
Next one, how is the load visualized on the art planning board? So I think that was a, a bit fast, so maybe we can show, show that quickly. May, maybe you can go on the art, on the team board, on one of the team boards. So what you see here, this iteration one of that team is overloaded. So we have more load than capacity. So we get that red indicator already on our team board. That should help us as a team. And we do have the same color as a background on the art planning board. We only have that color on, on art level. Or we just open the art metrics for load and capacity. And there we would see the, the load as well. So I think that would answer that question.
And by the way, I, I want to add to that because sometimes I see teams always calculating, oh, what's your, what's our current load? They're doing Miro, Mural or, or other tools or on paper. What I really, really like about the tool, if I move another story in here. So I see I have a story with two story points, I move it from iteration two to iteration one. You see the current load is eight on iteration two and 108.5 on iteration one, it's a little bit high. But it will automatically adjust the load based on the story points. Or even if I change the estimation down here, you see how the load is changing. So you don't have to manually calculate, you see it automatically that, that, that what the tool supports. That's one, one of the features I really like.
Exactly, yes. Next one from Richard. I know you have done a lot of work to ensure PI planning works well for solution trains. Yes, that's correct, we just didn't talk about it. Is there any future where you look at the portfolio level? That's a very nice one. There are probably two answers I wanna, I wanna give here. So first, yes, we do have a solution planning board. Michael can probably quickly show that. The, the approach is exactly the same as we see on the art planning board. But instead of, of teams, we would now see our arts. So we can, we don't have to visualize dependencies that are going across arts on that solution, uh, solution board. What I see is that many customers that are having multiple arts planning together are not necessarily talking about a solution train. But they usually do have something around portfolio management. And they simply use this board to, to visualize dependency on portfolio level as well. Now, of course, regarding portfolio level and portfolio management in general, there are probably more things, at least I hear. Such things to consider, to visualize, again, also to be very transparent on that level. We are having that in mind. And I am talking a lot to, to customers, also to other people in the community around portfolios. So if you think, hey, that's a very interesting topic, I'd like to talk with Silvio about portfolio level, please reach out. Very happy for every insight, every idea about portfolio level. It's a very interesting topic. I always have ideas, yeah, me as well. That's a good one.
Me too, me too.
Then another one from Alex. Michael, you removed the link from the dependency while at the same time the items are set to done, I suppose. Yes, that's correct. The question is, how do we follow up on metrics regarding our dependencies?
The question for me would be, what are the metrics we are tracking? So that would probably, I, I'm, I'm not able to answer that question without going in. What do we want to track? And then I will see how I can make it. I'm, I'm not sure if we are tracking this with the, with the strings. So this, this is more heavily moved critical elements, that's why I like to remove the string. And I can see, still see it in the background, the history, what happens, I'm not losing the information, but it's still there. But I think we, we need to have an individual conversation to understand what metrics are you looking at related to dependencies?
Agreed, agreed. Just one thing, what, what I do like about removing the strings. You immediately, even if you do not want to, you immediately get progress. Even if you don't want, if you go on the art back, on the art planning board and you get less and less strings. You know, hey, we have resolved more and more dependencies. So that's already a great, a great feedback you see on the art planning board.
Yes, it's for the art, the people, it's a kind of accomplishment. And we like to have those positive news as well. So why not using this powerful board we have to, to show that?
Exactly. Mark raised a great question. The board, the art planning board, is that representative of a quarter? Yeah, it can be about a quarter, right? It's a PI, eight weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks, whatever you have in place. And we do visualize epics and stories on the board? Or are you also looking on the capability epic relationship? So I think those are two questions. Should we visualize user stories on the art planning board? And what about capabilities in case we are having multiple arts? That's how I understand the question.
Really good question. And that's where my anti-pattern comes in. No, we don't wanna see user stories as dependencies on this board, it's too granular. And if we have that, we are losing the overview and we're losing the focus on important things. That's why it's called significant dependency and it's not a story, it's a different item. So if, if this board is full with stories, what value will you get out of it? You have no clue anymore what's going on. You want to, want to make sure also during PI planning of this whole set, what are really the essential, the significant dependencies? And that's what you want to make visible. And now, Silvio, for my limited brain capacity, what was the second part of the question?
Regarding, how do we, what about epics and capabilities? The relationship between epics and capabilities?
Yeah, we, we typically don't have that visible on here. So we have different areas where we talk to that. That's more if we prepare the art backlog for the next PI planning, we have features in there. Yes, the features are probably connected to capabilities and, and to epics. Maybe we see links in here, but that's not something that would show up on the, the art planning board. I think there's a different place where this makes a lot of sense, but I don't think it adds a, a lot of value here. Maybe I'm not seeing something and I'm happy to discuss that, but I would not make stuff like this visible on the art planning board.
I agree. Next question, I think we can do, yeah, yeah, we, we have, we have some minutes left, so we can maybe do two, three more. How do you plan the required effort? Do you come from user stories for which you define story points and then sum those up? Question mark.
Well, I, I think that's another one to go a little bit deeper, have some follow-up question. Basically, I look at, we, we have a certain idea, what is the team's capacity? So that's the, the capacity, we, we try to have a certain alignment because we can benefit from that when we talk about portfolio and forecasting. And then it's, we are estimating the stories and they are visible on the, on the board. And we check if are, are those story types or team level work fit within the capacity a team has available? So I'm, I'm not necessarily going on the feature and art level here. I, I as well doing that at a different point of time, not during PI planning and not visible on the board.
All right.
So maybe in the meantime, I was able to get the, the board ready. So just, I want to show this art planning board. This is from a, a real customer's PI planning and they have the coaches sync in front of the big board. So that really helps with transparency. And that's the cool thing, why I like PI planning so much. You can use it on touchscreen as well, so the brain activity is still happening. It's not just clicking with the mouse in a tool. If you do in-person PI planning, then you can still benefit from that additional value you get. So just wanted to show this one and that this is from the management review, just to get a, a quick idea. So really powerful to create transparency and have great discussions.
Yeah, that, that, that one is amazing. And I do know this customer, they also had external dependencies. And there was a question around that, how do we capture external dependencies outside of our org? So let's say, when we have dependency with our procurement, for instance.
So we, we, they come up during PI planning. Often we, we see them, we, we have them maybe at the end of day one in management review and, and. We, we have them maybe at the end of day one in management review and, and problem solving. And we want to make them visible to better understand first, when does it happen? Also manage with the, the external stakeholders. So maybe you get them into PI planning as well to really synchronize. Are they delivering? Are they available in, in iteration two? Because we need it in iteration three. And so that's just making it transparent and then working on it over time. Because if I have a dependency on an external team, uh, every PI and every iteration, why don't I get the team into my art or part of the team into my art? So that's kind of the relentless improvement and reorganize uh, around value that we can improve the flow. Less dependencies typically means better flow.
Absolutely.
Right. Uh, so again, I think we need to stop here now because you keep, wanna give some time back as well. But Michael, first of all, this has been amazing and insightful. So thank you so much for doing this.
You're welcome.
What happens next, and this is for everyone in general, is you'll get an email from me in the next 24 hours. I've already posted this in the chat a few times, but again, you'll get an email. And if you are then interested in a deep dive demo of the tool, I'm gonna share my Calendly link. Please feel free to book a slot or you can simply reply to me on the email. You'll have the instructions laid out and then we'll be more than happy to answer any specific questions for you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Silvio. Thanks. We'll speak soon. Bye.
Thank you.